Please stand at this time for Fudge to the flag. And during the moment of silent meditation, I would ask that you remember a former board member who passed away last week, Mr. Jack Chapon. Will?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, on behalf of the board and the superintendent, we welcome you to the budget hearing today. And without any further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Thumann to review with us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll need Mr. Pamela to get it up for us so we can follow along at home for those watching. All right, there we go. All right, so this is our last presentation for this year's budget cycle. All this we have talked about before. I'm going to do a brief overview for everybody in the crowd and be watching at home so they know what they're being asked to vote on in two weeks on May 20th. So our agenda, I will go over Proposition 1, which is the authorized budget limit that we're asking for for next year. We'll go over the three-part budget, which breaks down where we spend it all and a year-over-year comparison. We'll remind them of what that means for their tax dollars and their house evaluation, whether taxes will increase if for next year, if this is passed. Proposition number two is on the bus transportation. Then we talk about contingency budget at the end with a reminder of when the vote is. I know Proposition 1 is the first slide. I know the language is small, but that's the language we have to show to vote on approved. That's the language in the pamphlets that the voters will see. Basically, what that is saying is that we are authorizing the district. The board is authorizing us to spend $111,969,264 next year. That is approximately a 4.5% increase, I believe, from this year. It's just under $6 million. That's been a consistent increase the last two or three budget cycles for the district. So that's been pretty consistent in what we've been spending and doing in recent times since we kind of came out of COVID. This slide here, again, online, if you're looking at it, you can blow up and see it. It's the thing behind me. I can't read it either. Don't feel bad. This is a comparison. The first column explains the components of the budget, the major areas of where we spend our money. And then there's a 24 school year and then the 25 school year. Our middle two columns comparing year-over-year, the increases. And then the percent change is the last column. That's just basically showing where that increase, so that 4% is coming from and the actual dollar amounts tied to it. This, which is much easier to see, is a pie chart, which basically gives you those three components broken down into percentages. 75%, the big blue area, is program. That's teachers' curriculum. Most of our main stuff you see in the classrooms every day. 16% is capital. That's the lighter blue area. Probably could have picked another color, but blue, but we are in Frontier, so we doubled up on blue. But the lighter blue area is capital. That is your furniture, your repairs to buildings, all that. And administrative is any overhead costs that are directed in the classroom. So district administration, office administration on the campuses, and some other miscellaneous charges that we have throughout the year. So 3/4 of what we spend every year is in our teachers' curriculum benefits and that directly tied to our classrooms. This slide is the two areas that are affected by the Frontier of School District. I say "two" because Eden does have a small section of their population, which is they are eating tax dollars, but they overlap the Frontier District. So on average, for Hamburg, which is 87, I believe, percent of our taxpayers that cover our school fees. Yes, the 3.15 levy percentage next year will be about $100, $101 exactly per $100,000 of assessed value. So if you have a $250,000 assessed house in the town of Hamburg, you're about $250 more on your tax bill next year to keep the tax levy where it's at, which is where we're at right now. 3.15 is the percentage we're going out at. That is a very good percentage. It's very, in comparison to our neighbors, we are on the lower end of it. So I think we're pretty confident in that. Proposition number two is because we are buying some, purchasing some vehicles for the district. We will put this out for the board, the voters to approve, that we are going to buy three buses to replace some aging in our fleet, as well as two more electric-powered vehicles for facilities. We already started doing that in the past couple of years. We're just continuing on with that. That total is just under $600,000. Again, that will be the two things that the voters are voting yes or no on for us to use money next year for. That's the language for it. No reason to read it if you want to. It's online. You can read it. It's basically saying the same thing with all the legal jargon tied in. The last slide that we talked about is a contingency budget. A contingency budget, if our budget go on the 20th fails, by state law, we go into what's called a contingency budget. They take what we are currently spending this fiscal year and they do a minimal increase to it to offset any basically cost of living or anything else that vary minimally. They reduce some of our facilities areas, what we can spend. And basically, at the end of the day, if our budget doesn't pass, the state's contingency formula puts us at $3 million short. So instead of $112 million, we'll be just under $108,900, I think that says. That is a state formula. We have no control over that. So if the budget does not pass on the 20th, we will have to come back to you at that next board meeting with a $3 million plan on how we're going to make up that shortfall in the budget. Going back three slides, part of that conversation is 75% of our stuff is tied to us, is tied in staff and facility benefits. Not a lot placed to find $3 million to make that up. So not passing the budget, state law says, if we're doing what we're coming back to the board, we're going to have a tough end of May trying to figure out how to find $3 million. It's about 12 to 15 full-time teachers in the classroom if you want to do rough numbers, if somebody was wondering that. And then reminder of the budget vote. The budget vote is on Tuesday, May 20th. It's in this room all day, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So please come out and vote. Support the district, support us. And let's get ready to go into next school year. Ready to rock and roll as I want. Questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thumann. At this time, if anyone in the audience has a question or a comment, please come to the podium and fill out a card with our district clerk who is seated there.
People have a card for the others privileged in the audience tonight. I'd like to just comment on the word.
Sure.
It's been a while since I've been talking, sorry. People have to remember, because I've seen lots of comments on social saying that our tax increase is 4 points, whatever the budget increase is. That is not our tax increase. Our tax increase is, and I'm not remembering the exact numbers, 3.15. 3.15. So I think that's a very important point to make to everyone who's here and anybody who these people talk to. It's not a 4% tax increase. It's a 4% budget increase and only a 3.15% tax increase. So my, well, it's more than opinion, my facts.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a question or comment from our audience? Looks like we don't have any. So we will have any closing comments from you, Mr. Swiatek?
I don't know. This is a, the budget is a culmination of many conversations amongst the board. I'd like to thank this board and also members of the facilities, our the finance committee, Trustee Kilcoyne, and President Costello in walking us through this. Dr. Thumann has done a really nice job. We were very, very cognizant of the loss of some revenue for state and federal aid. And we are also very, very aware of the impact on our taxpayers and what that would mean to them. A lot of thought went into this to maintain our programs, maintain our integrity as a strong academic institution. And I'm very comfortable with where we're at with this process.
Thank you. At this point, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the budget hearing. Mr. Ciccarelli and Mr. Cordier. And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We will now go into our regular meeting. Are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda by the superintendent or board members?
I have no adjustments.
Anyone else? Okay. I'd like a motion then to accept the agenda as submitted. Someone? Mrs. Hepner, second.
Second.
Mr. Boyle, and the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Privilege of the floor. The privilege of the floor is not an open-meeting law right, nor is it a question-and-answer period. Privilege of the floor is an opportunity this Board of Education provides to interested citizens to state their concerns and/or comments on district operations and activities. The procedure is as follows. When I ask if anyone wishes to speak, you may proceed to the front of the room to the podium. The privilege of the floor card must be fully completed and handed to our district clerk, Shannon Cross, who's at the table. In addressing your question or comment to the board, we respectfully ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less and not mention the names of individuals or any titles that point to a specific individual. Where appropriate, the board or administration will follow up with a reply. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board?
Is there a particular order?
I'm sorry?
Can you make copies? If anybody wants to remember what I say.
Would you give us your name? I'm sorry.
I'm Kathy Doer.
Okay, I knew I knew you. Kathy is a former board member.
Know Kathy well.
So, as a former board member and the mother of a Frontier graduate, I'm disappointed with recent decisions that have been made by the current Board of Directors, Board of Education. I'm sorry, I work for a corporate company. Board of Education. The Frontier Music Program has been a shining part of this district, receiving many awards every year. It is not the place where cuts should be made. The music program helps an extreme number of students become better academically, whether or not they pursue a music as a career. It provides them with discipline that carries over into academics. The music program also allows them to interact and become friends with a great group of students they may never have had exposure to. The music program has been running extremely smooth over many years with the same staffing levels, which are not extreme. Just because a teacher retires is no reason to not fill that position. By not filling the strings position with a teacher with the proper training, it devalues the students in the orchestra. As the person who has been instructed to include that in daily work for next year, that person is not an expert in that field. There is plenty of time to fill that position since it's only May and the school year doesn't start until September. I expect the board to rethink the plans that have been brought forth for the string/orchestra position. Would you eliminate one of the coaches for the football team and expect another coach to cover more? I seriously doubt it, and I'm not suggesting that since that would not be the right thing to do either. What are you going to do in the coming years when a few more music teachers retire? Not fill those positions either? If it's a money thing, I have worked on the budget when I was on the school board. I'm sure you can find many other places where the belt can be tightened as to not affect academics. This is not the time to set a precedent for not filling necessary teaching positions. It's time to do the right thing for the students. That's why you all ran for and were elected to the school board. Remember, you are the last defense for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doer. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time?
Mrs. Doer Howard, would you like a response? Or is that an informal piece?
It was, please don't make total decision on what's being done.
Right, but how would you like the response? Would you like it to come from myself in regards to your statement, of which I have? Or was this a statement to the board?
I'd like a response.
Shall we understand your response?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, that will take us to Points of Pride. And we have with us tonight the top 10 students of this year's graduating class. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Frontier Board of Education proudly commends the top 10 seniors of the class of 2025. Samantha Hague, valedictorian. Olivia Eckert, salutatorian. Madeline Smiley, number three. McKenna Miller, number four. Annie Pico, number five. Grace Collins, number six. William Miggas, number seven. Trent Wojahowski, number eight. Isabel Kleinman, number nine. And Dominic Stack, number 10. May have a motion.
So move.
Mr. Voto, second.
Second.
Mr. Kilcoyne, and the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. At this time, we have our building principal, Mr. Charlin, who will introduce our top 10.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Good evening, district administrators. Good evening, community at large. As a high school principal, it's my pleasure to take some time to tell you about the stars of the show, the academic top 10, as it is known, at Frontier High School. I've spent a considerable amount of time working on what we would call mini sort of biographies of these students. And I could probably be here until 9 o'clock this evening, but I'm going to try and encapsulate some of the things that we found. And certainly, I hope I did you justice because these are just shining stars in our community. And certainly, the best is yet to come for these folks. So it's my pleasure. I'm going to get started with Dominic Stack, ranked 10th in his class with a GPA of 98.98. Dominic, a member of the National Honor Society, currently serves as president of the Varsity Club. He's excelled in coursework, including AP Biology, Calculus BC, Government Statistics, US History and World History, as well as a dual enrollment course in French 5. In addition to his academic achievements, Dominic is the captain of the Frontier Varsity Football Team, a member of the Varsity Wrestling Team and Wind Ensemble. His commitment extends beyond academics and athletics as he volunteers with St. Francis of Assisi Parish, supports Frontier schools through community initiatives, including the Turkey Drive, gardening projects, the school supply delivery, as well as mentoring younger students. Dominic also balances his responsibility with a part-time job at Wanaka Country Club. And in the fall, Dominic will be attending Alfred University to study biochemistry. Congratulations, Dominic.
Congratulations, Dominic. Would you like instructions for this? Congratulations, Dominic.
It's tough being the first one to come up. Congratulations.
Good luck at Alfred.
Dominic, before you go, will you introduce those people who came with you tonight?
This is my mom, my grandmother, my father. That's it. Oh, yeah, my grandma, my aunt.
What do you mean, oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Who is that?
Congratulations to all of them as well.
Okay, moving on. It is my pleasure to introduce you all to Isabel Kleinman, ranked ninth in her class with a GPA of 99.01. Isabel is an academic high honor roll student, a member of the National Honor Society and Tri-M Music Honor Society. She has also earned the New York State Seal of Bile literacy. She has demonstrated excelled leadership as captain of the Varsity Swim Team and has been actively involved in the Foreign Language Mentoring Club, Spanish Club, Ecology Club, the Wind Ensemble, and the Orchard Park Town Wreckers Swim Team. Isabel has excelled in AP courses such as Biology, Environmental Science, Government, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Statistics, and World History, as well as dual enrollment courses in Precalculus, Calculus, and Spanish 5. Beyond academics, Isabel has volunteered for the Ride for Roswell, Lindy Incorporated, and various school events. Isabel's work experience includes lifeguarding for the Orchard Park Town Wreckers Swim Team, Wanaka Country Club, and Frontier High School. Isabel will be attending SUNY Freedonia to study early childhood and childhood education.
Congratulations, Isabel. Congratulations, nice work.
Felicitaciones.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And will you introduce the people who are with you this evening?
My mom, my sister, my grandparents, my aunt, uncle, and my dad.
Congratulations.
It's my pleasure to introduce you all to Trent Wojahowski, ranked eighth in his class with a 99.41 GPA. Trent is a member of the National Honor Society and serves as a senior class delegate. Throughout his high school career, Trent has demonstrated academic excellence by taking a variety of courses, including AP Biology, AP Environmental Science, Language and Composition, Literature, Statistics, US Government and Politics, US History, and World History. Bless you. Additionally, Trent has completed dual enrollment courses in Calculus and Spanish 5. Beyond his academics, Trent is an active participant in several school organizations, including the Ecology Club, Mentoring Club, Service Club, Ski Club, and Spanish Club. His volunteer work includes Trent's Lemonade Stand and the Hamburg Beach Cleanup. Trent also balances his academic and extracurricular activities with a part-time job at Wegmans. In the fall, Trent will be attending the University of South Florida, majoring in Biology.
Congratulations. Get rid of this Buffalo winters. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Enjoy town.
Trent, will you introduce the people who are with you this evening?
My mom, my dad, my brother, my sister-in-law, my niece-in-law.
Mom's got the USF shirt on her, right?
Certainly a familiar face to you all. It is my pleasure to welcome William Miggas, ranked seventh in his class with a 99.54 GPA. William serves as the president of the National Honor Society, student government president, secretary of the Tri-M Music Honor Society and the ex officio student representative of the Board of Education. William proudly represented Frontier High School at New York Boys State and is a three-time participant in the NASA Hunch Program. Academically, William has challenged himself with a rigorous course load, earning recognition as an AP Scholar with Distinction and a Seal of Bile literacy recipient. His coursework includes AP classes in Biology, Calculus BC, Environmental Science, Governments. I lost my spots. Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Music Theories, Statistics, US History, and World History. Additionally, he has taken dual enrollment courses in Precalculus and Spanish 5. William is an active member of the school community participating in the Bible Club, Chemistry Club, Ecology Club, International Club, Jazz Club, Literacy Club, Model UN, Pit Orchestra, and Spanish Club. As a musician, William is proficient in saxophone, flute, piccolo, clarinet, and trombone. Musical achievements include being an all-state and all-county musician, a member of the Buffalo State Honors Band, Erie County Fair Band, School Pep Band, and a member of his own student-run band, as well as the Greater Buffalo Youth Orchestra. He has composed and published music with Hal Leonard Publishing Company, as well as being a dedicated athlete competing in both the cross-country and track teams. While managing his academic and extracurricular commitments, William also works part-time for the summer for Lakeview Heating and Cooling. In the fall, William plans to attend the University of Pennsylvania, where he will pursue a major in political science and a minor in jazz studies.
And Will, will you read the introductions?
My wonderful father, my hardworking father, and my, hopefully, a few years to become the president, sister. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to introduce you to Grace Collins, ranked sixth in her class with a 99.60 GPA. Grace is an academic high honor roll student and serves as vice president and member of the National Honor Society, excelling in rigorous coursework, including AP classes in Calculus BC, Chemistry, Statistics, and World History, as well as dual enrollment courses in Calculus, College Physics, Precalculus, Spanish 5, and SUNY English 100. Grace is the secretary of the Chemistry Club and a member of the Spanish Club and World Language Mentoring Club. Grace also plays the clarinet in Frontier's Wind Ensemble and Orchestra Ensemble. Outside of her academics, Grace participates in the athletics and arts, being a member of the Frontier Varsity Flag Football Team, a dancer and teaching assistant at Hamburg Dance Center, as well as a martial artist at United World Martial Arts. Grace is also passionate about giving back to her community, volunteering at Vacation Bible School, the Frontier High School Craft and Vendor Fair, Pinerst Elementary, and United World Martial Arts, all of this while working part-time at the Grange Community Kitchen. Grace's postgraduate plans are to attend the University of Albany, majoring in mathematics. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Annie Pico, ranked fifth in her class with a 99.651 GPA. Annie is a member of the National Honor Society, a recipient of the College Board AP Scholar Award and the Seal of Bile literacy recipient. Throughout her high school career, she's challenged herself with several advanced placement courses, including Calculus BC, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, US Government, US History, and World History. Besides her academics, Annie is a competitive dancer at Derby Dance Connections. She is an artist at the Gretchen Wiener Fine Art Gallery and shares her language skills as a Spanish mentor at Blaisdell Elementary. Annie is also actively involved in the community, volunteering for Vacation Bible School at her church, Yuletide in the country, and a local outreach center. Annie will be attending RIT and plans to major in Packaging Science.
Can you tell us who is with you this evening?
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
Congratulations.
It is my pleasure to introduce you all to McKenna Miller, ranked fourth in the class with a 99.652 GPA. McKenna is a member of the National Honor Society, an AP Scholar with Distinction, and a recipient of the Academic and Cultural Excellence Award. She serves as treasurer for both the Senior Class and National Honor Society, and is earned the Seal of Bileiteracy. McKenna has completed numerous AP coursework including Biology, Calculus A/B, Chemistry, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Statistics, US Government and Politics, US History, and World History, and dual enrollment courses in Pre-Calculus and Spanish Five. McKenna is actively involved in the Varsity Flag Football Team, Ecology Club, International Club, Ski Club, Spanish Club, and NASA Hunch. She is a founder and member of the Bible Club and an officer and member of the Mentoring Club. McKenna volunteers at Life Church and has participated in mission trips to the Dominican Republic and Romania. Alongside her academic and volunteer work, McKenna works part-time at Kentucky Fried Chicken. McKenna will be majoring in Nursing.
Congratulations.
McKenna, who is with you this evening?
My mom and my dad.
It is my pleasure to introduce you all to Madeline Smiley, ranked third in her class with a GPA of ninety-nine point eight-seven. Madeline is a distinguished student, recognized as a National Honor Society member and AP Scholar with Distinction. She serves as the Ex officio Student Board Member, committed to academic excellence. She has challenged herself with a curriculum completing AP courses in Biology, Government, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Statistics, US History, and World History, as well as a dual enrollment course in French Five. Madeline serves as the Treasurer and Member of Student Government, the President and Member of French Club, and a member of the Mentoring Club as well. She is a varsity indoor and outdoor track athlete. She leads as the Girls' Varsity Sprinting Captain. Her achievements have been recognized with the Chester Selasny Family Award. Madeline is also committed to service, volunteering at Pinehurst Elementary School and Hamburg Presbyterian Church while working at Greyheart Boutique. Madeline plans to study Kinesiology at Penn State in the fall.
Congratulations Madeline.
The people that are with you this evening?
I have my mom and my dad.
Great, congratulations.
I'd like to introduce you to Olivia Eckert, ranked second in her class with a GPA of one hundred point two-five, earning the honor to serve as our Salutatorian for this year. Olivia is an academic high honor roll student, a member of the National Honor Society and the Foreign Language Honor Society. She's excelled in a rigorous curriculum, excuse me, taking multiple AP courses including Calculus BC, Chemistry, Government, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Statistics, US History, and World History, along with a dual enrollment course in French. Beyond academics, Olivia is an active member of several extracurricular organizations, including Frontier's French Club, Mentoring Club, Mock Trial Team, Model United Nations Club, and the Yearbook, Yearbook Club. She is also a varsity athlete on the Flag Football Team. Olivia volunteers as a youth language mentor and with Friends of the Night. This fall, Olivia will be majoring in International Relations at the University of Toronto.
Will you please introduce the people who are with you this evening?
My mom, dad, and my little sister.
Congratulations.
It's my pleasure to introduce you to Samantha Hay, ranked first with a GPA of one hundred and one point zero-one, earning the honor to serve as our Valedictorian this year. Samantha is a National Honor Society member and a recipient of the Seal of Bileiteracy, excelling in AP coursework like Environmental Science, Government, Language and Composition, Statistics, Theory, US History, World History, and dual enrollment coursework in French Five. Samantha serves as President and Member of both the Trium Music Honor Society and the Frontier Music Club, as well as an Officer in the Frontier Mentoring Club and a member of NASA Hunch Program. Samantha is a talented violinist, performing with the Kinhaven Music School and the Greater Buffalo Youth Orchestra. Outside of her academics and music, Samantha volunteers at the Heart Animal Shelter and works as a private violin teacher. Samantha plans on attending Baldwin Wallace University, majoring in Violin Performance.
Congratulations Samantha.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Samantha, tell us who's here with you this evening?
My dad.
Congratulations.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you Mr. Smith. We're going to take a picture of the top ten. Mr. Charlin, we see Mr. Whitman here. Are there any other high school administrators here? Oh, there is. Two, Mr. Rivers. And from the board, maybe we could have Mrs. Hepner. I'm sorry. Caitlin, where are you? Oh, there you are. Please join in the hall. Superintendent, I think you should be there too. Mrs. Doofen, you should be out there as well. And parents, if you want to take pictures, please feel free to go out in the hall and do it.
Congratulations.
Anyone else who'd like to leave, please feel free. What an impressive group. I'm so excited about it, I forgot to ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda. So I'll ask for it now. Thank you, Mr. Kilcoyne, second. Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Ms. Cross, are we good?
Ms. Cross, did you get my last motion? Did I say all in favor?
Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did. Okay, we're good. All right. That will take us to six point two, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent. The Frontier Board of Education proudly commends Frontier Central School Building nurses in recognition of National School Nurses Day, Wednesday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-five, for their important contributions to the students, staff, and community of the Frontier Central School District. May I have a motion? Mr. Chicorelli, second. Second. Mrs. Hepner, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And I believe Sheila Brown is with us this evening. Sheila, will you introduce the other nurses that are here as well?
Mary Ann Light from the high school. Rita Chat from our big picture program in Southtown. Amy Newt from our middle school. And Hannah Law from Blaisdell Elementary.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Hey stranger, how you doing?
Congratulations. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. You've been staying so long. I just appreciate you. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
The nurses will be out in the hall to have a picture taken. Mr. Voto, Mr. Correa, and we'll be in this one. That's one of them with you as well.
Smile.
That will take us to six point three, resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent. The Frontier Board of Education proudly commends the Frontier Central School Teachers in honor of National Teacher Appreciation Day, Tuesday, May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, for their hard work, commitment, and dedication, as well as their positive impact on our students and community. May I have a motion?
Go move.
Mr. Kilcoyne, second.
Second.
I think we had both Mr. Chicorelli and Mr. Voto. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And with us tonight, we have Mrs. Jacobowski. Did you bring anyone else from the FCGA? Would you introduce?
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Get a picture out in the hall. Mr. Chicorelli, please join the room to show Mrs. Doofen and Mr. Correa. Six point four, we have a presentation from the gentleman from Campus Construction, as well as Dr. Thumann, so I'll turn it over to him.
I was gonna do, no picture needed for this group. Mr. Sullivan, Campus Construction, and also David Boxer here as well, for our writing and most of those projects, so, good for them. Good luck, thank you very much. We need you guys, gentlemen. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm in a little awe and, uh, feel a bit privileged to have seen what I saw this evening. Uh, the students and the achievements they achieved. Blown me away. So I could, uh, a bit of my pride away. So, um, we're there for the simple, brass, thanks to construction work. So, good evening. Um, it's represented by the construction, Campus Construction Management. Uh, David and myself would like to thank you for the opportunity to, uh, give you an update on where we are with the construction project, uh, for the twenty twenty one capital improvement project. Um, our last presentation was in, uh, July of last year, twenty four. Uh, I was quite surprised when we look back at when it was, seeing that stuff we've done since then. Uh, but we will try to keep this brief. Um, in July last year, we had just finished off the, uh, construction work in the pool and the locker rooms. And we had, uh, handed that over for a summer program. And we were then moving into, um, the tech wing of the middle school. Uh, we'd already started the construction work, some of the demolition work. And so once we finished the pool, once the school comes down, for the summertime, we then moved into, uh, the tech wing, started to work in there. Oops.
He was zoomed in from before. He was zoomed in before, I know, names. I left him down.
So on this slide, you'll see, um, this is one of the technology classrooms that were completed over the summertime. Uh, we had, uh, three classrooms to work in. And we converted, uh, two of them into, one into a workshop, one into a woodwork shop. And, uh, that was completely gutted and rebuilt with all new, um, electrical, uh, mechanical systems in there for dust extraction and the like. Um, the third room that was done, uh, actually created the new, uh, middle school fitness room. Uh, thank you. Um, which is a fantastic, um, room to, to create there. I believe that the, the school provided, um, all the equipment that went in there. I think it's a fantastic, um, little space that's, that's been created there. The, uh, the new fitness room on the ground floor replaced the, um, room, the weight room that was on the second floor, uh, near the gym. And that room was then turned into a new computer design, um, just, uh, laboratory up there. Again, with all new, uh, finishes and all new, uh, equipment that went into that room. Uh, whilst we were on the ground floor, the first floor, doing all the work in the tech wing, uh, the school district decided to take the opportunity to upgrade the finishes in the, uh, couple of corridors adjacent, um, around the pool, I'm sorry, around the gymnasium. Uh, so we put all new ceilings and lights and flooring in there, uh, to make the place, uh, look more appealing with the, with the new equipment in the new technology room as well. I think it worked out really, really well. Uh, meanwhile, back at the high school, uh, we continue working with the, on the, uh, the final field that we've, uh, done in this athletic complex. Uh, also purpose field, um, all new, um, astroturf or, uh, I call it astroturf. It's all new turf that's gone in there, um, with the, uh, perimeter fencing or the netting that went up as well. Uh, the next slide, I think, shows that in more detail. So we've obviously got the forty foot fencing, twenty foot fencing, uh, for the various sports that have been played. And it's been a, a pleasure to see in the fall, we managed to get this finished just in time for the, uh, the full sports to start. The cross was out there playing on early. I know the, uh, Victory Elementary School were using it an awful lot in that, in that fall zone as well. It's, it's great seeing kids enjoy themselves. So in October, we received the long awaited, um, sports lighting, which was, um, going around the, the new fields, the three new fields we built. Um, and I went out and got some shots of these, um, in play in the, in the last few weeks. I think it's been great to see this, the, 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 the local community coming out, watching the sports under the lights. It's been fantastic. Uh, I've never experienced anything quite like it. I come from a very different background, but to see softball and baseball being played under the lights, all the families there watching, it's been a privilege.
If I could, I'm just gonna add one thing there. So parents that don't know, that light system, this thing allows us to have all of our teams play now on the new field. Modifieds play every game there so far. So it's, it really helps the middle school all the way up by having greater from all access.
Absolutely.
It's impact, right?
Yeah, and the, um, the, the, the system of lighting that's been put in, you could have, you know, one, one field being, being active, the other field's not, all three at the same time. Um, you know, and like I said, I went around the other evening, took some photographs and, and spoke to the, uh, the coaches about getting the, the pictures that I didn't want to disturb them by putting the other lights on. It worked, it worked really, really well. The, the new digital scoreboards that's there as well gives a fantastic feel for it. Um, so this, these last few slides are the concession stand. We broke ground on the concession stand between the, the old football field and the baseball field in, uh, October, November last year. Got a awful lot of work done, and then the weather hit and it kind of slowed us down. But this is taken recently. We've got all of the foundation work done, the walls up to grade. Um, that's a shot taken from the top of the bleachers, uh, so you can see the football field in the distance. Um, we are going out to bid the documents that we've got for the, um, the concession stand build, um, very shortly, in the next month or so, with a view to starting the construction work of that concession stand in the fall and finishing in the spring of early, early next year.
Jim, one question I ask for the benefit of the board, now that the, the, the foundation is done, how are we securing that space in the, in the downtime?
We're, we've, we're actually keeping the fence, the temporary fencing that's there.
You are.
We're gonna keep that place, close it in a little bit around, around the, the area, um, and lock it all up. It'll be, it'll be secure if we make. Obviously, and, and I know this for a fact, uh, some of these kids need a little bit of training on the baseball. So they hit a lot of flying. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I've, I've, I've launched fifteen or sixteen balls at a time back into the field.
That's very, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
That's why we're not putting a metal roof on this thing.
Yeah, absolutely right. Um, we're, we're people on that space and the teachers need to get in there and get ball. We'll, we'll obviously let them get in. It's, it's, it's contractually, it's still, uh, a construction site. We, we need to, uh, monitor that. Um, finally. Finally, yeah. Um, at Blaisdell Elementary, uh, we've been working on the ground funded, um, new basketball and pickleball courts. Going on the east side of the existing playground. Uh, that again, unfortunately because of the winter that we had, it's slowed down. But we are progressing now. We've got all the underground utilities completed, the new light pole is up. And we're just waiting on the date now for the, um, the finishing asphalt surface, the plain surface to go down. And the, um, there's one other thing that is, other fencing that the, we're, we're trying to talk to that with the, uh, the, uh, the school. Get their own fencing done. Uh, finally, and most like for this, um, we've been working very hard with all the design team colleagues and the district representatives, uh, finalized on the scope for phase three at the high school. Uh, what we announced a bit earlier this year, we got, uh, some good numbers, contracts have been recently awarded. And we have commenced work on this phase. We're starting in the pool area. At the moment, that pool will be down now for the next, uh, twelve months or so. And the work's expected to continue into the fall of twenty twenty six. Once we finish in the pool, we've been moving into the kitchen and cafeteria, the tech wing, stem wing, and then the main office, the two-story main office at the front of the building. Um, we'd like to thank the, the district, the design team for all the help they've given us. And long may it continue. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Did you say pickleball?
I did say pickleball. Apparently that, uh, this area of Blaisdell is the, uh, center of pickleball excellence.
I believe that. That's.
This Chris Switek tells me it's in it.
Andrew, can you go back one slide? One more. Uh, so this is the concession stand foundation in this area. If this looks familiar, this is the football field. This is a big blacktop area. Uh, we worked with our facilities guys and we put five pickleball courts right there. So they're being painted in right now. And then we'll have two additional at, um, at Blaisdell. And we're also looking at a middle school concept, so we cover the whole district. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
How great.
Thank you very much.
Jim.
The improvements are great, Dave. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Tim covered it all.
That's good.
Dynamite, dynamite.
Thank you, campus.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been around for a while here in the district, uh, in many capacities. And the improvements that I see, not only to our instructional areas, but to the athletic fields, which were long overdue, uh, are just tremendous. So we thank you for all that you've done for the district, as well as the time that you've put in. And now you, Mr. Dr. Thumann. So it's a really great way. And we probably will have another capital project soon.
Mm-hmm.
We have some ideas.
We're already in the planning phases. Yep.
So all is good. Thank you.
Concept, concept.
Yeah, if you would like to leave, feel free. You don't have to sit here. Um, we are going to our committee reports. And first up is the audit committee. Mr. Voto.
Yes, um, we, our next meeting is June tenth here in the boardroom at eight o'clock AM. Dr. Thumann and I spoke this week and we worked out the schedule for audit committee meetings for next year. Ms. Cross has got that schedule and the board, I believe, would that be July? Mr. Switek? In July for approval.
Thank you.
And also, special thanks to Mr. Boyle, who has led me through this committee for the past two years.
He has been a mentor for audit.
He will be, he's been a very good mentor and I wish him well as he departs the board next month. Thank you. Like I say, from Chick to Waga, we were side by each. Side by each.
You did a fine job. Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Cordier.
Oh, well, my presentation was basically killed just by Jim. We, we had three topics in the bulk of which, number two was the capital project. Um, and he pretty much covered it all. The capital outlay project was, um, uh, is gonna take place at the middle school. I guess where there's some situations with the roof, where there's some leaking in, on the roof and in the small gym area that'll be taken care of. Um, and third, um, topic was the Falcon Center update. Um, the transformation is beginning and it's pretty amazing. I, superintendent has asked if anyone is interested in going over and taking a tour and go and see it. It's quite amazing. Dave and I were there about a month or so ago before this work took place. And it looked pretty dang good then and supposedly even looks better now there. Um, also, we did see preliminary sketches, very preliminary sketches of the entrance way to the athletic facility that everyone just saw. Um, and there were quite a few questions, especially on cost and funding. So it was sent back to get those calculations along with, uh, the diagram that we saw. Which was just the first idea.
Anything else from you, Mr. Hefner?
No.
Okay.
You touched base on everything.
Great.
So again, if any board members want to take a look at, uh, the design at the UPK Center, um, please, uh, reach out to myself or Shannon and we'll be happy to walk you through the facility.
I think the idea of having all our UPK in one place is terrific.
It's magical. It's gonna be amazing.
It really will be terrific.
Absolutely amazing space.
The, the, some of the pre-K teachers already went over there to take a look, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Are you thinking about pre-K, Mrs. Jacobowski? I thought you were over there going, ooh, ooh.
It does sound nice with the fireplace, but I'm off.
They do have fire, yeah.
No, the fireplace is ultimate.
Yeah. That's the money part of it.
Okay, finance and budget, Mr. Kilcoyne.
Yes, thank you. We met today. Uh, we did a capital project update preview. Thank you, Dr. Thumann, for doing, making my job much easier with your presentation. Um, we also did the budget presentation preview that we, we set for today and the budget roadshow. He's going out to all the schools. He's got about half done and the other half to do in the upcoming week. Um, and we also talked about the credit card process improvements for some policies. We're looking to consolidate into one and, and, and raise the limit and, and have new controls put into place. And that'll be brought up to us shortly. So.
Thank you. Uh, IDA, uh, just a couple of things. We had, uh, had a, an acceptable fin, final audit report. Uh, we updated some policies. But the exciting thing is, um, around the stadium area, there's going to be a public information session at Hilbert College at six PM in the auditorium on May twentieth. Uh, they're looking to zone some of what they're calling an entertainment complex that will affect the town of Hamburg as well. So if anyone's interested, you can go over to Hilbert on the twentieth, six PM, and hear what they have to say. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May fourteenth at seven thirty AM. And from there, we go to Safe Schools. Mr. Boyle.
Thank you. Uh, we met on April thirtieth. It was a well-attended meeting as always. Um, we had a great agenda. The first thing we talked about was a, was a new program called Say Something: Anonymous Reporting System. We have passive things that watch emails and various things. This is a more, a system, I call it a whistleblower. It basically be an application where people could report whatever, whatever they see. And there's a third party, um, agency that gets the calls, they're professionals, they screen them. And then if they think it's needed, they immediately will send it into school district and it'll go through channels. Um, it's a BOSI's Adeble thing. It's a good thing. I believe the committee was all good with it. And so more to follow. Dr. Jackie Gao did the investigation, did a great report for us at the meeting. Um, Chris gave us something on the door safety in this building, how we're gonna have doors closing everywhere in the district and they'll all be fobbed and secure. And that's why that, uh, new student center will be very important. So parents can come into an area that kind of keeps them in one area. Um, we talked a little about the TAP application. Some staff members were a little concerned. This is an application where you could cause the whole district to lock down. So while it's a really good, fast thing, it's also a thing people were a little leery about. So there was a lot of discussion. Our SROs were very helpful. More to follow on that. We talked on cell phones. We'll go with that later. Um, Chris gave something on summer school. It's all ready. We're good. We have transportation looking forward. And they did a drill at Cloverbank, which went very well. So the meeting went well. Next meeting is June eleventh.
Thank you.
Chris, on that TAP program, do you know what the role on is? How many people using it?
Well, everybody's on board and it's, it's into all of our, and to our computers. The issue is, is it's, it's, it's the stress of pressing go, right? Red is bad. Anything red. So when you go into the TAP app, let's see if I can pull it up. So let me just pull it up. So the TAP app, it looks like this. It comes up on your phone, okay? And essentially it says shelter in place, hold in place, evacuate, secure lockdown and lockdown. This goes across the entire district in less than five to seven seconds, okay? But for drill purposes, it gets a little scary because we've actually had people try and create a drill, but actually put us into a legitimate lockdown, okay? So we are having additional training for our admin team and then it's gonna get rolled out to our buildings as well. So if you go into it now, there's three different buttons when you do it. You go in, it says, are you sure? And you go, yep. And then it goes, are you really, really sure? And then, and then, and then on the third one, it's lie. But it can be anxious if that's all you're trying to do is create a fire drill. And then all of a sudden, you press red instead of green and now, now we're in. So, um, the principal asked, principals asked if we could bring this back, do additional training, maybe also roll something out as well again in the summertime for our staff. Um, and so that's what we're gonna do. Tremendous tool, tremendous tool.
And it's for all the buildings.
It's for all the buildings, yeah. Yeah, so, um, this connects to about twenty administrators instantly. Um, we get them, all cabinet members get them, and it's a very effective tool. Little anxious if you're not comfortable moving around in your room, so.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. And one of the things that came out of it was a suggestion, I think it was from the SROs, to maybe create a subject matter expert in each building. That would kind of be the mentor for this application.
To go to, yeah.
So more to follow from admin on that.
Yeah, yeah. So we have twenty-five minutes of our meeting tomorrow is dedicated to TAP app training and then the identification of a building level expert in that app, so.
Do they have anything built in where you can have a drill and that be the real thing?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's green and red. You just gotta, you gotta remember, okay, is red good or red bad? Right?
Okay. All right, student achievement, Mr. Ciccarelli and Mrs. Hefner.
Okay, we met in person here on April thirtieth. Uh, present were Colleen Dugan, Linda Danza, Ryan Sikorski, Sharon Hefner and myself. Uh, three hot topics were addressed. First was the core ELA program for grades K through five.
Mrs. Danza explained the pilot process and discussed the three companies that participated in the pilot. She also reviewed the evaluation tool that was anonymously completed by teachers in the pilot program. She explained the process in which teachers were selected for the pilot project. In total, twenty-two teachers participated. The final results, the chosen program overwhelmingly overwhelmingly was the program Bookworks. Second, update was given regarding the twenty-one students previously identified as being at risk of not graduating in June. Colleen noted that the total number of at-risk students is actually higher but the majority of the students are low risk and should be eligible to graduate in June. She broke down all twenty-one descriptions and noted that only three are likely to not graduate in June. And the third topic was the topic of chronic absenteeism. The most recent, end of the third quarter data was presented. Most buildings went up in terms of the percentage of students chronically absent. So obviously this is still a topic of concern. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at eight AM.
Thank you, anything to add, Mrs. Hefner? Okay.
Will.
All right, I don't have a ton today, so I'll start off with the NHS induction ceremony happening on the eighth. It's very exciting to see all these new people come into NHS as the president. I've gotten a lot of nice opportunities to do some great things around the school and I'm excited to pass it off, although I won't officially be there. We all know that May twentieth is a really huge day. That's when the chicken barbecues are gonna be on sale at at the high school.
Sold out.
As a fundraiser for the junior class, so you know after people vote, maybe they'll come over and get a a nice warm chicken. That's very exciting, I think it's for the junior and sophomore classes too. And that starts at two oh five PM.
You said it's sold out.
I think it's sold out, they put this on.
Is it already?
I think, there's a sign out here that says chicken barbecue sold out, yeah, I think so, good job.
Well, there they go.
Yeah.
Uh, the ecology club recently did a beach cleanup right outside the building here. I'm not sure how many pounds we collected, but I remember lifting a really big like boat trailer out with a bunch of people and it was something we were trying to get out of there for years. So we were able to make a lot of progress on cleaning up the beach. Next, the Triumph Chamber concert was a success, we had a lot of small quartets and quintets from the high school, the middle school, choral ensembles, string ensembles, brass ensembles, recorder ensembles, you know, like the things you play in elementary school. And it was a really great concert, it was it was a lot of fun, something that we used to do before COVID that we're just starting to bring back. Speaking of music, there's a lot, there is a music field trip coming up at the end of the month and a lot of science field trips too, I think they're going to the UV Medical Center and also the zoo coming up. Okay, this one a little bit more serious, not not, not anything to worry about, but it is AP season right now. And me personally, I've I've taken a bunch of these exams and I I've kind of been able to see what the testing environment is like for most of them and usually it's really good in the back gym of the high school. But sometimes there are disruptions being in the high school from, you know, I mean we had a fire drill, that's not really anybody's fault particularly but a lot of us had our exam canceled for this AP biology thing. Other things have come up and I'm wondering if for next year, if it's possible to move to a different testing center, say the senior center perhaps, just to see if we can get away from like, I guess all the students. You know, I feel like there wouldn't be any fire drills there, there wouldn't be any announcements, there wouldn't be any students coming along the halls. I know especially for the music theory exam last year, it was a little bit challenging being situated next to the gym because we had to listen to oral prompts as we answered our questions and there was sometimes music playing in the gym or people yelling. And I'm not saying that the testing environments are always bad, absolutely not, but I'm wondering if it's that much of a trade-off, if there's that much to lose by seeing if we could go to the senior center being so close. I haven't thought about this a whole ton, other than the fact that I see that as a currently empty building that I believe we're occupying next year.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, so you're moving into a building with two schools, including a hundred and fifty-five four-year-olds, okay?
Okay, okay, all right, well, this is why I give you, I guess.
Yeah, so, well, I do like the idea because it is a, it's a gym, but there's gonna be over two hundred and ten to two hundred and fifteen students with an alternative high school and a hundred and fifty-four-year-olds, so.
Alternatively then, maybe we should look into ways to cut off access to the back gym.
Yeah.
It's, I feel like not super hard to do, but something that I guess you wouldn't know if you aren't like in the exams currently, so.
Sure, sure, so the fire alarm, is a fire alarm, right?
It happens.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll talk to the high school team about some some ways to seclude those areas a little bit better, yeah.
And specifically the music theory exam, I'm not saying there's going to be problems, but I remember last year I I wished I had said something before I took it.
Don't the foreign language APs have a listening component too?
Yes, we don't have foreign language APs.
We don't have any more APs here, alright, okay.
No, yeah. Yeah. Yep, uh, not super serious, just something I thought I'd mention, just to see if we could come up with a way to get less distractions, not that there's a ton. But that really closes it up for student news, we're we're doing good, excited for prom and everything, all the regular senior activities. We're still posting senior decisions on the Instagram if anybody's watching and wants to be up there. Personally, myself and Russ Greaser have been working to get those up in timely fashion. We're excited to honor all our seniors that are going into the military, the workforce and college, so. It's a little bit sad, I'm almost done here, but that's that's gonna conclude it for this student report.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I could wonder at all if it would be practical and possible to have the testing site. It would take some creative genius maybe, but have the test in the auditorium, if we could somehow filter in desks between those seats, like something to write on because it's very quiet in there during the day. I don't know if that would be possible, if we could have some type of, because that's all you would require, right? Is just a hard surface to to write on, I mean is that, I don't know, just trouble.
The auditorium, I mean it's it's pitched, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, we could use the stage area and the and the fan pit.
I think, absolutely, I think the back gym is fine, but it just needs to be, there are classes in that area, but maybe like
Basically.
Cut off.
Cut off. It's not super often, but every now and then you get a couple kids that are coming by, they look in the room and see twenty kids taking a test and they just like knock on the door and by the time the, you know, counselors that are in there can, you know, go say something and they're already, you know, down the hall.
That's what I was just gonna ask, is on average, how many kids approximately are taking AP exam, probably depends on the course.
It's, there was one that had four kids today and there was one that had around thirty, so, yep.
Anything to report from the middle school?
No, I I did reach out to the middle school and I I didn't get a response, I'm sure they're doing cool stuff. I I just, I'll have that at the next meeting, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes us to eight point one. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the following. These are positions to be created, a registered nurse, a custodian, a laborer, a cook, food service helper, two school lunch managers, all of those will be for the Falcon Center. And then we have a senior account clerk for the business office and the abolition of an account clerk typist also in the business office, may have a motion. Mr. Cordier, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eight point two, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the resignation for retirement of Sharon Anger, a laborer at the high school effective July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Hefner, second?
Second.
Mr. Ciccarelli, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to eight point seven. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the transfer of Lisa Nowak, senior account clerk at a prorated salary of fifty-five thousand dollars as per the managerial confidential terms and conditions of employment effective May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Further, this recommended appointment has fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department and Office of School Review and Accountability, may have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Kilcoin, second?
Second.
Mr. Cordier, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eight point nine, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education appoints the following individuals to a support staff position, salary in accordance with current district F C E A collective bargaining agreement and salary schedule. Further, unless noted, these recommended appointments have fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department and Office of School Review and Accountability. Carrie Ann Mekus will be a food service helper throughout the district. Nicole Suzak will be a school lunch manager at Cloverbank. Jonah Gally will be a bus attendant in transportation and Nicholas Todd will be a bus attendant in transportation, may have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Voto, second, sorry, Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eight point fourteen. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreements and funding between the Frontier Central School District and the Frontier Central Employees Association as per the attached, may have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Ciccarelli, second?
Second.
Mrs. Hefner, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to the warrant report, ten point ten. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts the business management reports ten point one through ten point ten as submitted, may have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Kilcoin, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that will take us to ten point two six. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves a contract with Amy Spicola to serve as a payroll for effective April first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at a rate of thirty-seven dollars per hour as needed for payroll processing and training as per the attached. Further, the superintendent is authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the entire board, may have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Ciccarelli, second?
Second.
Mr. Kilcoin, on the question.
Dr. Costello?
Yes.
Just a quick one, so the thought is to hire somebody, is that what we're looking at by it's only through December?
Alright, you want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, yeah, we are, no, with our change of payroll, both both of our payroll techs are are new at it. So we have worked with payroll technician from a neighboring district who's been doing it for fifteen years, twelve, fifteen years, who they've all, they had a couple trainings together, kind of connected, so we work with her and doing contractual work where she can basically timesheet work when she's here working, nights, weekends or just doing other other times. She is actually only a part-time payroll technician now at this point in her career in that district, so she has some time during the week where she can come over during the day and work, which has been tremendous to help the learning curve of both of them. So the thought is to keep doing that. Our other goal, we are currently paying BOCSA's to do some of that work now that we are going to stop doing, we're not going to be paying them July one. That's a significant savings budget-wise to bring that back in house, so we want to get them up to speed before July one. So we're clean going into the new year.
Is it aidable with BOCSA's?
The BOCSA's is aidable, but the the, yeah.
She's not, but the BOCSA's will get.
Understand, yeah, my thought really was about the the date, December, I was wondering, so thank you.
Yeah, we just wanna, no, with the transition in July and then the beginning, start of the school year, we still want to make sure we have somebody on on staff. And going through BOCSA's demand, we gotta pay for that compared to what we can do something like this, makes, this is a much better solution.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Mr. Switek.
Yes, good evening everybody, I wanted to start off with a, on a high note and congratulate our our board president, Dr. Mary Ann Costello. She received from the New York State School Boards Association the Boards Mastery Award, so Dr. Costello, congratulations. Very nice, congratulations for your efforts and the work you put in as board president of the district, thank you for that.
Thank you.
My other items were taken up either through presentation and many conversations here today, but I did want to share with the community that just like in years past, we do expect to have our bell start and end times posted the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend or the Friday before, no, Friday's a day off for students. The Thursday before Memorial Day weekend, to stay consistent with what we've done with the past and also to take our audit information on our transportation and to recommend officially a tier schedule to the board for the June board meeting for our schools. And that's it for my updates, if I could go right into eleven point two, if you allow me to.
Sure.
Also, I want to present to the board the proposal from administration to the board in front of you in your folder, you should have the administrative guidelines on cell phone, digital device used for grades U P K through eight. And I would like to ask the board if they had any questions or also ask permission for this to go into effect tomorrow morning. Our administrative teams have been put on notice, it went into the Falcon update for the public to be aware. And I would like to have an open conversation with the board regarding the administrative guidelines. Any questions if we can add for them and to seek approval for this to be put into place tomorrow morning at seven oh two AM.
Any questions, thoughts, anything you want to share, Mr. Boyle?
I like it, I like I like the concept that it's kind of based on the honor system, let's see how it goes. I think it's a good policy.
And for those that don't know, I think it was important to let every, this really did start with the New York State Governor, its company, you know, and they were working on theirs and we were ahead in the game so that the hope was if we had something in place, we will need it to keep it. So again, we're still waiting for the final state guidelines, but I think this is a great start to to get us moving there.
Anything else from anyone?
I'm just wondering if, I mean, obviously I'm not in middle school, does this mean you don't want them to bring them to school and leave them in their lockers? Or do you want them to, what do you?
Yeah, so if you get an opportunity, Will, to just peruse it, it is on the honor system, okay, so students will be allowed to appropriately use their cell phones on our transportation, but when they enter the building, to put them away and secure them themselves. So the first one is, is hey, we want to trust you, do the right things. And then after that, for those of our our student population who would like to test the rules, then we have, we have steps to remedy that.
That's fair.
One thing too, Will, it's important, I think at the middle school, we've had some discussions, that there's sports and and to have them in the locker for when school's over to see if there's any updates, parent notifications, that made sense.
I'd like to add also, last year, Dr. Thumann and I talked about this a bit and actually you started the ball rolling even before this down at the middle school.
Yeah, we, we had a cell phone practice procedure at the building when I was hired into it.
Right.
And then, you know, as in my first year there, we, it was pretty lax, it was pretty pretty open. So we got with the teachers and with the students and we started tightening up on it, which then, you know, eighteen months later, the governor's basically, everybody needs to do it. So in a sense, yeah, we were a little ahead on it, but it's been part of the conversation there, it's not new news, yeah.
And also, this is our preparation for those watching from the sky, for And also, this is our preparation for those watching from the sky, um, uh, for grades nine through twelve as well. Um, after we, hopefully, we receive governor's um uh guidance, uh, K twelve next year, so.
Do we need a motion on this?
We do not. I just need uh, hey, we're all in agreeance and tomorrow morning, we is step number one, yeah, so.
I think it's important for the public to understand this is not a board policy.
Right.
Right now, it is an administrative guideline.
It's a guideline, yeah.
Stay tuned for more.
Agreed. Well said, Mr. Chicorelli.
Very good.
Okay, and that's it for me.
Okay. Eleven point three, we have some policies to reach higher because they're no longer required or they appear in a different form. And those are fifty-two forty, school tax assessment and collection. Fifty-two forty-one, property tax exemption for senior citizens. Fifty-four twelve, excuse me, obtaining authorization for purchasing requests. Fifty-four thirteen, store room requisitions. Fifty-five eighty, financial accountability allegations of fraud. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Voto, second?
Second.
Mr. Boyle, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eleven point four deals with the second reading of some policies. On uh resolve that the Board of Education upon a second reading adopts the following policies. Seventy-five twelve, student physicals. Seventy-five fifteen, student with life-threatening health conditions. And eighty-two seventy-one, internet safety, internet content filtering policy. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chicorelli, second?
Second.
Mrs. Hepner, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eleven point five, David Lowery has asked for our nomination. I think you've all met him in one time or another. He's attended our board meetings. So um we have this on the agenda, resolved that the Frontier Central Board of Education nominates David Lowery to serve as the N S B A one director for a two-year term effective January first, twenty twenty-sixth. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Boyle, second?
Second.
Mr. Voto, on the question?
Dr. Costello, just to say, uh, David Lowery, he's currently the C E O of Erie County School Boards. He's a past multi-year board member of Iroquois. He's a very hard worker and he's very dedicated. He's a, he's a teacher, he's a teacher, he's our teacher at Lardmore. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And Mrs. Cross, you'll notify Mr. Lowery that we have nominated him?
Yes.
Thank you. And that will take us to roundtable. And let's start with um Mr. Voto tonight.
Congratulations to high school top ten, but even more importantly, congratulations to the families that gave the support and guidance to these students after all these years. I'd like to thank our nurses and our teachers during their appreciation weeks. And thanks to Dr. Thumann for the final budget presentation.
Mrs. Hepner.
Reiterate what Jim said, and I also wanted to thank Linda Danza and the teachers for their work in piloting the new proposed reading program. Um, I know it's a big undertaking and I think it's gonna be great that they selected an option to move forward with. And I feel that we're very blessed to have so many talented teachers in the district.
Thank you. Mr. Chicorelli.
Last night, um, along with a couple of other board members, we attended the meet the candidates event sponsored by the P T A Council. I thought all three candidates saw many positives in our district and want to be part of us moving forward. I also thought the event was very well organized and carried out. Uh, congratulations to Frontier's top ten. I wanna thank our school nurses for everything they do to keep our staffs and students safe and healthy. Want to encourage all district residents to vote yes for the budget on Tuesday, May twentieth, as well as vote for the candidates of your choice for the school board. And finally, I purposely uh wore my favorite quarter zip this evening in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week. Yesterday, I received a message uh from a teacher I previously mentored, reminding me that once a teacher, always a teacher. And I wanna thank all of our teachers for all that you do, day in, day out, on behalf of our students. When I think of our teachers working in twenty twenty-five, I am reminded that not all heroes wear capes.
Very good. Mr. Boyle.
Um, I had the opportunity to attend an Erie County School Boards function called Twist on Tech on April tenth. It was the um Harkness Center B O Cs. And I attended three different programs there. They went on Vet Tech and went on electrical circuits and went on aviation. And when I was in school, B O Cs was kinda like where kids went that didn't do well academically. Let me tell you about the aviation program at that Harkness Center. You ever, have you ever looked in the cockpit of a jet aircraft? They have three simulators where the kids in this program, they learn all about aviation, all about it, about the ground crew and transportation and and they get to fly, and they get to fly in the simulators, and they get to fly in aircraft. They go up in planes, sophomores and juniors. I mean, Harkness and B O Cs, not all kids should go to college. Check out the programs. They are not what they used to be years ago. Um, I also had to attend a program on April twenty-second called Sacred Music in a Sacred Space. It was a concert, it was our core groups from the high school in the Basilica, and it was phenomenal. And Lou Schaefer did a unbelievable job. Our students were there for five or six hours. They toured the facility and they practiced. They played with, um, I can't remember the gentleman who was the organist. Do you know who was Jim? I'm sorry. He was excellent. The the students were phenomenal. They did one song, they called The Navajo Prayer. They surrounded the outside of the Basilica, about two-thirds of it, I'm sorry, inside the pews. It was like sitting in a speaker. It was it was it was just wonderful. They did a great job. The top ten, I I feel, I always feel this big when I listen to those students. We all start college as a junior, well, um, that's great. I have high expectations. They will do well. And I would like to thank our nurses and our teachers. Um, those people make huge investments in our community. They keep our kids safe and they make them smarter. And I know you'll know, I said this the other day, when I went into my high school teachers, I still call them Mister and Misses, and they go, you don't have to. I go, no, I do have. So thank you.
Mr. Cordier.
I'm gonna stop being towards the end here with well-stated Mr. Chicorelli, as usual, everybody else on that side of the table. Lindsay, I can only see the top of your head, but thank you for everything that you guys do. You're amazing, the teacher, the teachers week, and also the nurses. Congratulations to our top ten. Dr. Thumann, thank you for the last and final presentation of the year.
Mr. Kilcoin.
Everything's been said, but again, congratulations to our new hire and our retiree. Um, and again, a special thank you for all you do to our teachers and nurses. Without them, just nothing happens here within the district. Um, many go above and beyond to make sure it's the best experience for our students. Uh, top ten, I like Mr. Boyle. I sit here going, do they sleep? It's incredible the amount of activities and the grades that that these students are able to maintain. And last but not least, May twentieth, wherever you stand, it's important to use your right to vote, get out there and 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 make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Swiatek.
Get on vote, Will. Congratulations, U Penn, well done.
Thank you.
I enjoyed our time. We got one more, one more left, right?
One more, yeah.
Good for you. Um, and I would invite the board, uh, this week, Thursday is the N H S presentation, and we will be there with yet more and abundance of high academic students. So if you get an opportunity on Thursday, come on up and join us.
And a little birdie just told me that the middle school is actually having their ball for bucks this Friday, so.
There you go, and and thank you to the nurses and teachers. I enjoy working with this group. A highly effective program with both our nurses and teachers, so thank you.
You all have said it all, but I do wanna thank the teachers and the nurses. I I think back to the days of COVID, which were so difficult for all of us, and the nurses really held everyone together. So a special thanks to them, the teachers every day doing what they can, which produces what we saw tonight with our top ten. It's amazing and we have a lot of gratitude for them. Uh, the presentation from the uh gentleman at uh the construction firm just helps us get students in an atmosphere where they can learn well. And it's just fabulous. I mean, I can't imagine anyplace else I'd rather be. Who said that? Anyway, thank you all. Uh, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Kilcoin, Mr. Cordier, we'll take a ten-minute break and then we'll go into executive session at, uh, let's say, eight oh five.